All right. Good evening, everyone. Now we back from closed session to open regular city council. City Attorney, Mr. Splender, you anything reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The council received information and provided direction to staff. At this time, there is no reportable action as defined by the Brown Act. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, call the meeting in order. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Papino. Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Please join us for silent prayer and flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next agenda item, Madam Clerk may have a replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, November 22 at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, November 23 at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is E, Agenda Approval Addition and Deletion. Council, anything concerned? If is not, then next agenda item is Presentation. We have a three presentation. First presentation going to Miguel Garcia. Is young man here?
His soccer start when he was a three-year-old. Fast forward to his time in Galt High. Miguel Garcia played varsity soccer all four year. He earned the Co-Athlete of the Year Award and was top scorer in the nation for winter soccer. Miguel overcame many obstacles and hardship throughout his time in high school. What he preserved and came out on the top, both academically and soccer. The city of Galt and community would like to honor Miguel Garcia tonight and let him know we all are very proud of his exceptional young man. Congratulations on all your accomplishment and we are excellent. We are excited to see all that you will do in your future.
Thank you. All right. Next presentation going to Galt Community of Character Coalition, Pride in Community.
Good evening. Going to ask a few other members to come forward. This is a real treasure, a personal honor for all of us from the Character Coalition. And I'd actually like Rod and Bronson to come forward. Rod and Bronson Semenek are the honorees tonight for Pride in Community. I'm not sure if you guys recognize these people, but you may. If you take a walk past Harvey Park on Third Street, you'll see an oasis behind a fence. What was once an abandoned lot is now a beautiful community garden. The dream of former Mayor Barbara Payne has come to fruition, due in large part to the efforts of two people, Bronson and Rod Semenek, who exemplify Pride in Community. Rod is the architect, ensuring the structural soundness of the garden. This year, he designed and managed the installation of the complete irrigation for each garden box, a huge project that had only been imagined for years. Rod can be seen in the garden every day volunteering, making sure everything is working. Other gardeners know if they have issues with their box to go to him and he'll help them. Bronson, on the other hand, is the artist. You'll see a teepee and whimsical scarecrows scattered throughout the garden alongside beautiful flowers and trees bursting with fruit throughout the year, all touched by her hand. She can be seen there just about every day, making sure things are growing as they should. Other gardeners know if they have questions to go to her and she'll help them. In addition to their work in the Barbara Payne Community Garden, Rod and Bronson also volunteer with the Sunshine Food Pantry. Rod and Bronson use their personal truck to pick up food supplies and deliver them to senior partners, senior apartments every week. The city of Galt, we know it, they have a jewel at 402 Third Street, the Barbara Payne Community Garden. It shines as a place for pride in our community through the hard work and tireless work of Bronson and Rod Semenek. And they are gratefully recognized here for their service with the 2024 Galt Pride in Community Award. And they were nominated by Pam Carpenter, all the gardeners, and also Carolyn Lara, who's here tonight also.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you for the Galt Community Coalition. They're doing an excellent job. They're doing a lot of things in this community. Any council member want to make any comment? If is not, then the next presentation is going to Consumnas Fire Department, CERT program. Now I would like to ask Vice Mayor to give their presentation to them.
Good evening, community who's here. Certainly certain members who came tonight and the fire department personnel behind me. I want to thank the council, my colleagues, for seeing a need and stepping up and assisting with the need. This all started about less than a year ago, where I was doing a tour of the old fire station, Station 44. And there were many improvements that had been done. And the plan was to move the CERT program into that station to provide training classes for the community, certain potential CERT members, and also storage of their equipment that they use. Now, many people don't interact with CERT regularly, so I'll give a brief presentation on what they've done in our community. They come to community events, provide first aid and CPR if needed, really assist with traffic control from time to time and do a great job with our Parks and Rec Department and Public Works and certainly our police department. One of the other things in my professional career, I had the opportunity to work with are the same CERT team to help find missing kids, to help find missing adults who couldn't find their way home. And I always used to say it's much easier to find a missing parent than it is a missing kid, right? If you have the kid, it's nice, but much easier to find the parent. But they did a great job in combing areas, searching for people, searching for evidence here recently. I guess not so recently, but helped the police department find handgun that they were called out to help with. So they've done a lot in our community. And how this came up was as we were doing the tour, we got to the outside of the building. And I think, I think this is how I remember it. So I think I said something to the effect, boy, this would sure be nice if we could paint the outside. And they said, yes, it would be. And so then there was born the idea to see if our council had the appetite to assist and provide some, a donation to help paint the facility. I will say, and they agreed last spring. And so we were able to finally get through the process of getting the check and we delivered the check about a month ago. But one of the things that people don't know is that CERT program is a volunteer program and it's to help train people to save themselves during an emergency and their neighbors and giving them some tools about how to work in flooding and fire and things like that so that until the emergency responders can get to them, they have a way to sustain themselves for a time. And it's greatly appreciated. Many of the CERT members are from the Galt community, not just the city, but certainly the surrounding, immediate surrounding areas of city of Galt. And so I think that was one of the reasons why they chose to put the headquarters down here and do a training out of this station down here. So I want to present a fake check, but it's got real money behind it to the chief. Probably should introduce, and I apologize. This is Chief Felipe Rodriguez, your fire chief. Captain Robert Brower, who is the captain that oversees CERT and then Director of the Consumnas CSD Board, Pete Sakaris, who by way of, many of you may recognize him. He worked down here in the city of Galt for the former Galt Fire Protection District for a long time. And now he's on the Board of Directors, serving in that capacity. So wanted to present the chief and everyone else that's here to accept as CERT members, if you could come forward also with this check and then wish you well on the painting.
As everyone is making their way down, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to our CERT members for being here tonight. Our Director Pete Sakaris would like to say a few words, but through Honorable Mayor Sandu and council members, we thank you for this check. We accept this. We will definitely apply it to the fire station to paint it. This is a great gesture and a partnership to make sure it's a beautiful fire station. So with that, I thank you very much for this $5,000 and turn it over to Pete Sakaris after our picture.
So I kind of know how this rolls. Let's take the pictures first and I'll go ahead and speak. So as the chief says, everybody comes to the front. I'll talk while they're all going back to their seats. Again, my name is Peter Sakaris. I am one of the Board of Directors for Consumnas Community Services District. I represent District Two, which is on the way far west side of Elk Grove. As the chief, or as director, as Vice President, Rich Lozano mentioned, I am a former Galt Fire Protection District, firefighter, engineer, captain, and assistant chief prior to the merge. But first of all, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for your unwavering support for the CERT team. They truly are the heart of our community, always there when we need them the most. Their willingness to dedicate their time, efforts, and especially during times of crisis, they are the essence of our community. As volunteers were once before, CERT is our new volunteers. They're the ones that support the organizations, support the city and the people of this community. Your gracious support will go a long ways in strengthening this vital team, ensuring that they are more prepared to serve and protect our community and, of course, make it look good. Now, on a personal note, it's kind of unique me being in front of here. Twenty-four years ago, I was begging for $8,000 to buy monitors for a fire engine. So it's kind of interesting to see extremely new faces. But also in 2003, is that correct when I hired Mr. Brower? Step up. Mr. Brower was hired in 2003 by a wonderful assistant chief, knowing that he will give back to his community more than they asked from him, realizing that his mission and goal in life was to ensure that somehow volunteerism would continue in both communities. So Robert, members of the CERT, thank you so much for what you do, but more so for the city council of Galt, for everything you do in support of CERT. Without your support, without your dedication, this would not occur. So thank you again very much, not only to you, but to the community. Thank you.
Thank you for all the Consumnas Fire Department and all the CERT member coming here tonight. Thank you. We are honored to come here, this meeting. Thank you, everybody. Any council member want to make any comment? If is not, then we're going to move to the next agenda item. Madam Clerk, may I have a public comments, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. First up, we have Ken Lee.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to comment, I love the Walmart upgrade. They put new gates in the parking lot to keep the trucks from going in there at night so not to disturb the residents. You know, the delivery truck can't get in there now, and so basically it helps out the noise. But you know with the additional pickup, on the pickup and delivery, they added many more parking spaces adjacent to the pickup doors. Customers and employees have to cross the roadway to get to the vehicles. So there should be traffic flow limiters for safety, such as marked pavement, five miles per hour, rumble strips, stop signs at the parking lot so patrons can turn left to go out on Twin City roads. Because sometimes you try to drive out and the cars come barreling in to get to that pickup. That, or painted white pedestrian lines that designate it, that's a walking area. Grocery outlet also expresses their concern to negotiate a favorable rent with the owner of the old Rite Aid. Is there any way, the city has a program to help the negotiations? I hear there might be a proposed truck stop between A and C Street on the east side of 99. This would greatly boost the sales tax intake to Galt, and it's to good ease on and off access from the freeway. This would draw more food establishments, plus the truck drivers buy tangible goods too. But the downside is, will prostitution come to Galt because of the truck stop? Thank you.
Thank you, Ken Lee.
Belinda Ellis.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I am here representing the Galt Arnold Cemetery District. I don't bring horrifically bad news, so that's a good thing. I do want to give you a slight, FEMA has come through with two projects. It's only taken almost two years. There are smallest projects, but that's okay. We're moving forward, we're not moving backwards, and fingers crossed, we will have water next year. But if you happen to have been by the cemetery this year and you've seen it's green, my staff has been truly amazing, and they pull hoses to make it green. And so they work very hard. But why I'm here tonight, as I wanted to mention, we have Rees-Across America coming up, which is December 14th in the cemetery. If you're not familiar with that program, it started a number of years ago. Back east in Maine, there was an abundance of Rees, and they were taken to Arlington. Since then, we were, we've had the honor that we were chosen as one of the Rees-Across America cemeteries in order to have display Rees and honor our veterans. However, this year, this is the bad news, I am behind on donations. We have, some of our donors have not come through. So I'm letting you know this, and I will leave a couple of my little flyers here if you know any organizations or anybody that can potentially donate for us. If not, that's okay, please come on December 14th. It's a lovely program, it's a great way to start your holiday, and thanking our veterans and letting them not be forgotten. I think it's a great thing. And I was in the cemetery once with Councilmember Farmer, and he was speaking with the air quality board, and he says, when I drive by Galt on Memorial Day, I feel like it's our own little Arlington when I look out at all the crosses that are in there. And we have a great heritage, and we have a great history of veterans from the Galt area. And so I just, I'm just asking for your support. So thank you very much. I do appreciate everything you all do.
Thank you, Belinda. Thank you for your comment. We certainly will help you whatever donation we can help. We always veteran of the top of. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, council member.
I just want to make a comment. Ms. Carla, I just want to thank you, if you could please pass on to your staff, that people don't realize how much work it has been for you guys to keep the, I mean, when the water, obviously when all that happened, there were some major people upset about, you know, the resting place of their loved ones and the condition of the not understanding what had happened. So, you know, my hat's off to you guys for over two years being able to keep that place green with no sprinkler system. People, I don't think, understand how difficult that's been. So, and I have loved ones out there, so I appreciate the work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Smith. Lindsay.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lindsay Smith, and this is Alexis Ortega. And I am here representing the Galt Youth Commission, and I'm here to talk about three events and activities that are upcoming, as well as some of the past ones that we have done. One of the past ones we did in October was the trick-or-treat on Fourth Street, and we were able to kind of put us out there and let people know what the Galt Youth Commission is, as well as sell out all of our candy. We all had a really great time. As well as our upcoming events, one event, March 29th, 2025, we have our A through Z dinner. And we also have a community dinner coming up on December 21st. And we are also preparing for lighting of the night. Lastly, we've been short on a mentor for over a year, and we really hope that the council will help us look for new mentors to appoint. We look forward to these events and support from our community. Thank you for your time in this space to address you guys.
Thank you. Thank you all the Youth Commissioner member, and thank you mentor Paige Lamson. And we certainly will, the new commission, then when the new council will came, I think three council member will be new the next year. So we will appoint as soon as possible with a new mentor. Thank you very much, you guys doing a lot of thing for the community.
Tommy, and I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Good evening, and sorry taking time for my personal matters while I'm here. I've received a-
Tommy, could you, could you, can you mention your name?
Oh, sorry, it's Tommy Maxoudi.
Thank you.
The reason why I'm here is because I've given a courtesy notice of A2110. And I spoke into TJ and tried to reason for my case. The issue is that I have a sitting RV that I used for my parents at the time when they didn't have a housing, and it's now, it's sitting in my front yard, and it's not registered, and I'm on one income. So financially, what's being requested from me, I cannot do, which is to store it in a place that is not in my property. But I don't see the reason why I'm getting the citation. I don't believe that the reasons apply to me because the purpose of that code was because it will make the neighborhood not pleasing. But I have pictures of how my RV sits, and it's literally, if you drive to the court, it is covered by the fence of my neighbor. And it is not blocking anybody's way and driveway or anything like that, but I didn't have any other, I don't know what other route I could take to prevent the courtesy from turning to a citation.
Thank you, Tommy. Thank you. We certainly will, somebody contact you for the clarification, why you get the ticket, and what the best we can do. I will ask the city manager, he can communicate with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
No more public comment.
Thank you, Tina. Next agenda item is H, Report by City Council Member on Regional Board, Commission, and Committee. I will ask Vice Mayor Lozano, can he also give me, give us a detailed information on League of California City 2024 Annual Conference and Expo? Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I have a little bit of a lengthy report out today. Lots going on. We had a missed meeting that we didn't, that we canceled, so bear with me. The Vice Mayor and I, or the Mayor and I attended the California League of Cities Annual Conference, October 16th through the 18th. Some of the highlights were the Sacramento Valley Division Membership Meeting, and that was a board that I sat on, and new officers were identified and voted in. We had Sacramento Valley Division goes all the way from Shasta County down to the southern tip, which is Galt, and all the way over Yellow County and into the foothills. And so it was a great meeting with the people that we've worked with over the year, and having that conversation about issues that are plaguing each of our jurisdictions. Next was the general session, and some of the highlights there were centered around having conversations that matter and listening techniques specifically for constituents and each other. And so that was a pretty good, a pretty good session. Went to navigating homeless and regional partnership that's been put in place in Orange County. Many of these programs that are put in place throughout the state don't always necessarily translate to Galt, but pieces do. And so the North Orange County area has several, 13 cities that are involved in providing services for homelessness, whether it's support services or, you know, transitional housing. They all kind of shared the opportunities to engage in. One of the things they were able to do was get their state senator to earmark some budget money several years ago in 2018 to help put that together. Now it's rolling pretty well. Their homeless issues have tremendously dropped, and they're seeing great success in that region for that. We also went to an Economic Development and Public Finance presentation. This was from the Chino Assistant City Manager and City Manager in Palmdale, and then also some legal counsel about just public funding and how to do it differently. I think what I got out of it was it's not always a bond that you have to pass or a bond that the organization has to take out. There's other creative ways to do it through CFDs, which our city participates in, and other different tools to fund city services beyond what tax dollars are allotted for. Let us skip through, we went to the Rural Cities Information Exchange Meeting, and I'm a part of that organization, have been for the last three years. Much of it was focused on, the discussion was focused on insurance and the inability to access insurance from some cities, specifically down in the area of the National Forests in the Palm Desert area, and the city of Big Bear was one. And they talked about how insurance companies are not keeping them insured and/or in raising their insurance rates to a point where that's not affordable. So there was somebody from the Insurance Commissioner's Office that explained some estate programs that are available, which are still quite costly, but are used as stopgaps to to help people get insurance. And there was also a large discussion on forest mitigation, fire mitigation, and things like that, that we all provided input on. Then we attended the Mayor's and Council Members Department meeting, which was a time to honor people that had achieved leadership recognition, and also some cities that had done some outstanding services. And so they were allowed to be honored as well, so that was, that was good. Then we also attended a homelessness, another homelessness presentation from Redondo Beach and Santa Monica, that area in Torrance, where they talked about how they use the court system successfully to engage homeless people who have both criminal history and related to narcotics and things like that to get them into the system. And the big, the big takeaway was they were able to get a, once a month, get a judge and a court system down into, away from downtown LA so people would have access to actually go to court. And then they had outreach workers that were making those connections. And so a lot of that was done through grant funding and other, other means to assist folks that need it. And then I think lastly was, I stopped in on the last day to a, how to have a productive council meeting. The panelists were from all over the state, including the Mayor of Elk Grove, Bobby Singh Allen, who was one of the panelists that talked about the role of the council and how to treat each other, and then some tips and ideas about how to run a smooth meeting when you have people on Zoom bombing, and we had that issue here, and just some other tips on how to run an effective meeting. And so that's all I have for that. Appreciate the mayor joining me down there, and it was, it was a good time and lots to learn. I will move on, if you don't mind, Mayor, to my reports on other council, regional boards and things.
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
One of the, last Thursday, we had a Sacramento Council of Governments meeting, and as I've been talking about over the last year and a half or so, we have this thing called the Blueprint that is being developed, and it's a regional transportation and housing plan. The, we did the housing over the summer, and now we were working on transportation issues and how that's going to grow in the next four to eight years, and what projects throughout the region, the six county region, are going to be affected and be in the plan. And some ask all the time, well, why would I need to be in the plan? If I'm not in this plan, can I still build? And the answer is yes. The downside is, is that if you're not in the plan, you're not eligible for state and federal funding grants and things like that to bring those projects home and get them to completion, whether it be through a planning phase or construction. So that, that was kind of a big deal. And so we had a projects list, and there were several hundred projects throughout the region that were proposed. Our city staff, John Griffin and his team, put together a pretty comprehensive list. And I am happy to say that there were some projects that they were not sure whether or not would make it onto the list and into the plan. And Mr. Griffin was able to do some technical work and some working with regional partners to ensure that we got it in the plan, and we did. And so I'm very happy, and thank you, John, for all your work on that. What, I just want to highlight a few of the projects that are on the list. The Fourth Street Promenade Extension, which will finish the 220 feet between A Street and the promenade for public access. Right now, it's dirt and mud sometimes during the winter. And so that will, that one is on there, and that will enhance the mobility in that area. We have a Carillion Boulevard Extension from Summer Horn to A Street in Bosso that is also on the list, that is eligible for that funding. The new interchange at Walnut was not originally on the list. And I think that John was able to make, Mr. Griffin was able to make a great case of the economic impact of that project and the accessibility from one side of the city to the other through Walnut Avenue. And so again, thank you for that work, John. And so again, thank you for that work, John. There are a couple of others. Road improvements at Cost Street and the Union Pacific Railroad Crossing, looking to do widen four hundred feet of Cost Road on each side of the railroad tracks there for travel lanes and a bike lane and make it ADA compliant. And then some improvements on Walnut Avenue from, pretty much from the frontage road at East Stockton to Elk Hills, and there's some walking areas that aren't very friendly to walking, and so there's hopefully going to be money to put, put those to bed and, and really improve that area with the construction that's going on there, so. So that's all I have for that. And the, and the board voted to approve the list as, as presented. So again, I think our staff needs to be acknowledged for the work they do on that, and without the regional partnerships of that, that would not have happened. There were several phone calls made, and, and John came and spoke a couple of times at committee and, and board meetings, and so I think it really pushed that across the I'm going to stop there. Oh, one, just one last thing. I had my last California Council of Governments meeting on Thursday and Friday this last week, and there's some really good stuff coming out of, of this organization to advocate for local control, and, and I think that's so important. One of the things that Cal Cities also does is local control, and we did have only one thing, I'm going to go back to the Cal Cities Conference, we had one thing where we, the delegation, which I was the representative for the city, had to vote on, and it was a proposal out of Southern California for, to, to put, put legislation in place that would not restrict local entities and local policymakers to rules that don't apply to state legislators. And so if they're going to, for instance, one of the examples was campaign contribution limits, there's always an exception for the state lawmakers. And so the proposal is to get legislation written and signed by the governor that would say the governor and legislature, the governor couldn't sign legislature, couldn't put anything forward that affects only local leaders and not the state. And so we were supportive of that and don't know what, what will come of it, but I think it's good policy. And I will end with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sean Farmer.
This is going to be extremely short. I have nothing to report.
Counselormember Jay Vandenberg.
Thank you. I have nothing to report at this time either.
Thank you. Myself, one thing I'd like to, I was also join the California Annual Conference with Vice Mayor Lozano. I believe he very explained in a very detail. I don't believe I need to add anything, but this was a good conference. There are a lot of things need, we learned, and a lot of learning lesson was there. And I would like to recommend when, in, in a future, new council member, they need to join this kind of conference to learn a lot of things about the homeless law, a lot of other things. And I also did attend the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. That was my last meeting, and I was recognized for the five-year on that committee. The reason I was on the last meeting was next two years, that seat I was sitting, that was joined with the Ayton, City of Ayton. So next two years, the City of Ayton, somebody we represent from there. So I would like to ask staff, they communicate with them if they need anything to be over there. Thank you. Now we can move the next agenda item. Information Consent Calendar. It is recommended that item one through eight be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Any council member want to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number item three and four, please. Questions?
Three and four?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And myself, I'd like to pull the item number F five. Thank you. Now I will ask the city clerk, clerk, please, if you can read item one through eight except three, four, and five.
Receive and file warrants for period ending November sixth, two thousand twenty-four, minutes of the regular meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Electrical Facilities Cost Sharing Agreement with Caltrans for the Summerfield Development Project. Landscape Maintenance Agreement with Caltrans for the Summerfield Development Project and the Tobacco Grant Award Acceptance.
Thank you. Did you read the item number eight?
Approval of the New Project Classification Salary Range and Revised Salary Schedule for the Unrepresented Management Unit.
All right, we, I'm now going to pull, pull out the item number eight, but I have a few question on item eight. It will be City Manager or John Griffin?
Maybe John. Go ahead.
All right, you know, the item number eight, the salary range and revised salary. Can you might we explain a little bit on that position, what we doing, and are we adding any position, or what we doing on that?
Thank you, Mayor. With this, what it does is it provides flexibility to the engineering team to recruit and retain, or recruit and retain staff to help us administer both development and capital projects. We would not be adding any FTEs. It would just be giving us the flexibility. We've had a very hard time recruiting engineers. We've had multiple offers made, and then people back out from those offers. Right now, we are, from the engineering team, we're down fifty percent of what our staff is at, at full capacity. So this just gives us that flexibility in looking at how can we recruit and retain staff that can help us administer and manage projects.
Right. So this one be a project manager, right?
Yes.
And in your department, how many project manager you have to oversee the project?
When we're fully staffed, not including myself, there's the city engineer and four, four engineers. Right now, again, we're down two of those four engineers. So including me, there is a total of four. And so again, this just gives us that flexibility to find a way for those two positions we've been unable to fill, just to give that flexibility and, and having sufficient staff to, to manage and keep these projects moving forward. Right now, we're using consultants to help us, and of course, using, you know, it's preferred to have city staff administer those projects.
All right. So if we approve this project manager, so it can help the project move a little bit faster, what I'm doing right now, right?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Mayor motion to approve the item number one through eight except three, four, and five.
So moved.
Okay.
It's moved by Councilmember Farmer, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Madam Clerk may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by four to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item, number three on consent calendar, authorized to execute an agreement with Peterson Truck Inc., the amount of one hundred fifty-five, three oh eight, plus additional licensing fee for the purchase of two thousand twenty-five MB six oh seven MBA dump truck. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank John Griffin for coming by today and talking to me briefly about some of this items and actually answering some questions about some of the others, which we already approved. But as I told you, I would, I wanted to, I did have some additional questions. Reading the staff report here, and I'm, and I'm reading the page one of the staff report regarding the purchase of the dump truck, it asks for one hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred eight dollars, and it says plus additional licensing fees. And I'm kind of, maybe kind of talk about item three and four together, the two trucks, if you don't mind, just could be simpler. On the, for the, for the second item, number four, it talks about the, the, the VAC truck purchase. It gives the cost, and it says plus additional sales tax and licensing fees. So first, my first question is, the one hundred fifty-five thousand only mentions licensing fees. Does that number include the sales tax, or is that going to be in addition as well?
I'm looking at my staff, see if they know.
Okay.
So yes, that, we would have to include sales tax in addition to that.
Okay. Yeah, because the second one says plus additional sales tax and licensing, but for the dump truck, it just says additional licensing, so I just didn't know.
It said sales tax.
Does have the sales tax, which is why it's not, okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that. So this dump truck, explain the, the need for the purchase again to me?
Again, what we have, we have one dump truck that is, you know, it's approximately twenty years old, sir. It's a Ford, it's a Ford Dump Truck model, year two thousand and five. And, you know, these trucks, you know, have roughly a twenty-year lifespan, and part of the need to replace, not only is it at the end of its lifespan, it no longer meets the California Resources Board compliance standards for emissions. So we will need to replace that piece of equipment in the very near future to be compliant with state standards.
Okay.
And I think too, and if we, this is the last year, we can purchase, purchase a truck that has diesel engines. Starting next year, any truck will, with diesel engines does not meet CARB standards.
So do you anticipate any sort of, for lack of a better word, ridiculous legislation that's going to come and says that you no longer can use the truck that you just bought, you know, a couple of years, like if we buy this in a couple of years, and come along and say, well, you can't no longer use that as a municipality, you're going to need to buy a new one? I mean, has there been any, any indication of that?
Heard anything. Of course, that is always possible in the state.
Yeah. I, I think I can kind of chime in here a little bit. All the legislation that's come forward regarding emissions seem to be centered around new purchase, and with the understanding that existing vehicles will remain on the road and compliant until the end of their lifespan, so.
Okay.
However, like Mr. Griffin said, you could never predict the unpredictable down under the dome.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lozano. So the next question I have, and I don't know, you, maybe you weren't here when, when we bought a bucket truck for Public Works, and I asked at that time, what were we doing with the old truck? So what are we doing with the old truck, Mr. Griffin?
So we're talking about the AquaStar, or?
They're talking about the dump truck.
Uh, the dump truck.
You currently have a dump truck now, right?
Correct.
Twenty years old.
Um, I'm sure what we will do is we will try to sell it out of state for what little we can get for it.
Okay. Well, I like that answer.
I know, I'm not saying that, I, we, I need to investigate, that may be an option that we have.
Yeah, if you could maybe, maybe report back to me after, you know, one point, you could look into that. On the bucket truck thing, you know, there was like a, we were buying like, I don't recall, it was a hundred and forty thousand for the bucket truck, and we were going to get twenty five hundred dollars trade-in, and I was very upset with that because, and then I voted against it at the time it, the council did approve it, but later Mr. Selling called and said that he had actually had staff, they looked elsewhere, and were able to get like, I don't know, it was like thirty thousand for the truck or something by selling it out of state or whatever. So I would appreciate any efforts to recoup any money. It's taxpayer money, so thank you. My next question would be, and it makes sense, you know, the truck's twenty years old, I get it, so, I mean, we got our, we got our life out of it. So on the VAC truck, so first, thank you for answering the question. This is not the same VAC truck that we bought. It's different than the one we bought in two thousand twenty-two, because I'd remembered that. So explain the need for the second VAC truck.
Yes. So, Councilmember Farmer, this is a great question, and one we probably should have anticipated in the staff report. So the AquaStar unit we purchased in late twenty-two is used first and foremost in our sewer collection system. There's segments in our sewer collection system that require very frequent cleaning to remove blockages to ensure our sewer system continues to flow without backups. The Public Works Maintenance Team spends about a month every quarter cleaning these hotspots in our sewer collection system. And then outside of that quarterly collection system schedule, this unit is also used for emergency response for sewer blockages and also other planned Public Works Maintenance projects. On average, outside of that quarterly cleaning schedule, the, the existing AquaStar is used, you know, about three days a week. Such uses are not lim, or include, but are not limited to cleaning of the sewer mains prior to cambering, hydro excavation for projects, and also ensuring complete sewer collection system cleaning as part of our SSMP that's required by the state. So that's what we use, the existing AquaStar unit that we purchased in late two thousand twenty-two. So this one that's before you tonight is a second unit, and it will be dedicated primarily to the maintenance of our storm drainage collection system and our water distribution system. Because those are two separate systems, we need to ensure there's no cross-contamination. And again, as I mentioned before, on average, outside of that cleaning schedule, the existing AquaScar is available, you know, roughly no more than two days a week. And that second, so prior to using the existing AquaScar in any preventative main sewer main activities in our storm drainage system, we have to go through an extensive cleaning and decontamination, disinfection effort to use it in the drainage system. And anytime a piece of equipment is used in response to sewer emergency, you know, we have to disinfect it, and that's a very lengthy process. It takes several hours of staff time to clean with, with staff. So with the second piece of equipment, it allows for proper maintenance of our joint, storm drainage system so that we can clean the drain, drain inlets, the laterals, the main lines and drain outlets, you know, allows us to ensure that there's no sewer contamination from the sewer system to the drainage system. And again, just without the second piece of equipment, we do not have the ability to properly maintain our drainage system.
Okay, and you mentioned?
I'm sorry, one more thing too. This just also allows for some redundancy if we ever need to take, you know, the two thousand twenty-two AquaStar unit offline for any preventative maintenance or repair. We, we, you know, that just gives us that flexibility, and it's really looking at, as we continue to grow, and how much we use that first AquaStar unit, we really need that second unit to allow us to properly maintain the storm drainage system.
You also mentioned that the current, and I'm trying to make sure I understand this correctly, because it's a little confusing, that the current Aqua, the current VAC truck, the one that you, we do own already, was purchased in two thousand and four?
The one, the?
It says here, the city's current vacuum slash water truck was purchased in two thousand and four. These trucks have a typical lifespan of fifteen years. It has passed its lifespan and requiring frequent repairs. Public Works currently limits, et cetera, et cetera, goes on. So I'm just trying to understand, because most of my understanding that we're, you're looking to buy a second truck, not to be confused with the truck that you're saying that truck has duties that take, use a lot of its time, so we're looking to buy a second truck, but then this, this paragraph seems to reference a truck that's now past its lifespan, and it requires, so I'm confused. I'm looking at page?
Yes.
Number one on the staff report for?
I'm going to look to my staff for a minute to bail me out.
Just to, while he's coming up, it says, to finish that paragraph at the bottom, it says, please note that this vacuum truck is not to be confused with the city's previous sewer jetting truck known as the Hot Shot, which was taken out of compliance in two thousand twenty-two and since replaced. So I'm just trying to clarify, that's all. I'm just trying to.
Yeah, so I think there's some confusion there in the staff report. The original AquaStar unit that was purchased last year was to replace the Hot Shot, which was a twenty, or two thousand and four unit.
Okay.
And that's been sold and removed from the fleet. This unit would actually be replacing the use of the VAC truck, the actual VAC on truck that's a two thousand and twelve. It will be. It will be somewhat semi-retired, it will be used in utilities to be dedicated to the wastewater plant and the sewer lift stations. So there'll be very minimal use because it is at the end of its lifespan, it's not a true collection cleaning piece of equipment. The AquaStar is a recycling unit where we can quickly react and we can stay in the field basically for the eight to 10 hours out there cleaning and addressing the issues needed. So there is a big need for this, I'm sorry for the staff report error, it is a 2012 unit.
No worries, just trying to clarify. So, okay, so to understand, so we've replaced the vac truck, we've replaced that in '22, so we have that, and now we're looking to supplement that with the, with the additional truck for the reasons that John explained, right? Okay, so it says the cost is $741,000. We originally budgeted $885,000 back this last June in our budget, we budgeted $885,000, so it's under. But it, and it does mention through some kind of cost savings measure or cooperative purchasing agreement or something, I'm looking for that page, it says that we're going to save $80,000 on that. Can you explain what exactly that means? So does that mean that the $741 that you're asking to purchase this truck, does the $80,000 come off that or is that after the $80,000 was pulled off?
So, great question. So instead of purchasing a brand-new unit, which we estimated at the time earlier this year would be around $885,000, dollars with tax and licensing and everything included, this unit that we currently have is a 2023 unit. It's a demonstration model that was slightly used and it was offered us to a great discount and where we're going to have a savings of $80,000 versus what we had budgeted.
Gotcha, so the, so with that savings, so we're basically buying the '23 model at $741,000 compared to the $880,000, which we thought we were going to spend, okay, makes sense. All right, and those funds are coming from sewer utility, which fund is this?
It's all enterprise funds.
Okay.
And I think Streets also, 002, enterprise and Streets.
You probably don't have this, but, and I, and I, just as just for future though, for me would be helpful, first of all, I thank you for, I like the fact that you're looking at a truck that's a year, you know, because me, if you can save some money, that's great. Just for future though, if the staff reports could include the total cost, maybe even if it's a rough, because it says plus sales tax and fees, so I mean, I'm looking at $740, if you're buying something for $741,000, I can imagine what the sales tax and the licensing fees are going to be at. So I'd just like to know kind of what the ballpark total figures be that we're approving instead of just saying, well, it's going to be this plus, because that's going to be a huge number, I'm sure. So just for future, if you guys can include those, if you can try to calculate what the sales tax would be and possibly the fees, if you don't know exactly, but just give us a rough would be helpful.
Yes, sir.
So, all right, thank you for answering the questions, I think that's all I have, John, thanks.
Thank you guys for your support.
Councilmember Farmer, do you want to include on the item number four if any questions?
That, that was part of four and three, but together, that was both of them, yeah.
Oh, you clear on number three and four?
Yep.
All right, any council member, any question on item number three and four? Any public comment on item number three and four?
No comment.
Thank you. May I motion to approve item number three and four?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilmember Farmer.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jay Vandenberg. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by four to zero, thank you. Next agenda item, subject number five, electrical facility cost-sharing agreement with Caltrans for the Summerfield Development Project, equal exempt section 15164. Mr. Griffin, on this sharing agreement, can you might explain to the public or myself what's that mean?
Yes, so we have a cost-sharing agreement with Caltrans and that cost-sharing agreement covers how each agency will operate, maintain all of these signals that are within Caltrans right-of-way that are at intersections between, with city streets and Caltrans right-of-way. You know, the signals at 104 on Twin Cities, the signals at Central Galt. And the, the current agreement is 15, 10, 15 years old and the city is required, the city will pay all electrical costs and Caltrans then pays all the maintenance costs for those signals. It's a very favorable agreement. Our costs are about, you know, $13,000 and I'm going to say Caltrans pays roughly $40,000 a year. Caltrans is moving out of that model with all agencies and making it more of a 50/50 split for all costs. And because we, the Summerfield at Twin Cities Development Project required an encroachment permit for improvements on Twin Cities, that triggered Caltrans rewriting the, the electrical maintenance agreement. So with this agreement, we, we went back and forth with Caltrans and you get what you get. And so this will increase our costs associated with maintaining the, our signals along the state highway that we share with Caltrans.
So that's mean the new contract with the Caltrans city have to pay more than whatever the previous agreement?
We estimate it's roughly $13,000 a year more.
So why we have to do, because they don't want to agree it or how we, how usually negotiate, you negotiate or with somebody or how we negotiate? I'm telling, when we negotiating, yes, we want to be best interest of the city. I don't think so anybody want to pay more than whatever previous, but sometimes we have to live with whatever, but how you, just, just me educate, how you negotiate?
Yes.
With the Caltrans, we have to pay more than and they don't.
So the, the way the process works with any agreement with Caltrans is they utilize their standard form and they say they give an opportunity for comment, but it pretty much is, this is our form and this is the process you follow and these are the terms. And with this one, it was either you sign it or we're, you know, this project doesn't move forward.
So that's means Caltrans, they overrule to the city or we have any leverage, like in saying that you say encroachment, right? Or they can, they can be, can be in between the encroachment if we are not agree, that's what you're telling me, right?
We had very little latitude in, in the terms of this agreement, this is pretty much, you know, what they're, this, these terms here are pretty standard for what they're moving forward with, with other agencies throughout California. It just happened to be, you know, our agreement was 10 to 15 years old, I think it's closer to 15. There was nothing that triggered them running a new agreement, so we were able to utilize the existing agreement. Now with this one, there, these are the terms that were given and spent extensive time trying to convince them, you know, why we should not change or why we should just amend the existing agreement and even through those extensive conversations, it was not received in Caltrans, this is the, the form of the agreement we were given and told we needed to execute.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, not that I want to go to bat for Caltrans because I don't think I'd ever do that, but from Caltrans perspective, what facilitated the need for the traffic light is the development at Summerfield. So from Caltrans perspective, there would be no traffic light needed if there was no development. So this was anticipated, you know, through our growth pattern and, you know, costs like this are typically calculated into the new development CFD. So, you know, those participating in the new development safety in that area essentially will pay that electricity cost.
All right, no, I just want to be the clarification why we, you know, there is agreement between city and the state before and why we changing so much, that's kind of, I'm trying to understand. And I believe that Caltrans are using the same method with the other city, right? Thank you, Mr. Griffin, thank you for the clarification. All right, any council member have any question on this agenda item?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Any public comment on this agenda item?
No comment.
If she's not, may I have a motion to approve that agenda item?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Councilmember Jay Vandenberg, second by Vice Mayor Rich Lozano. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by four to zero, thank you. Moving along to next agenda item J, schedule matter and notice of public hearing. Subject, required public hearing to receive community input regarding the potential composition of election district for transitioning to a district-based city council member election consistent with election code section 10010.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council, I will just tee this item up for our consultant demographer. As you know, on October 1st, the council adopted a resolution declaring its intent to transition from at-large to district-based elections pursuant to Election Code 10010. The city has to hold at least first two public hearings, not more than 30 days apart, at which the public's invited to provide input regarding the composition of any potential districts. This is not a meeting where we are drawing maps, looking at, giving any direction in terms of that, it's really just an opportunity to get information to the public, to the council. These are the first two public hearings that are contemplated by the Elections Code, that is really just for informational purposes, to get input and to really, really invite the community to give feedback over this next process. Following these first two public hearings, just so you know, and, and the consultant will go into this in a second, there'll be other subsequent public hearings where we will start to really look at some potential draft maps. And so I guess, I don't, in order not to be redundant, I'll just turn it over to our consultant. It's Elizabeth Stitt? Stitt, okay. Stitt, sounds like it's an easy name to pronounce, but it's harder when you have to say it out loud. And she will go over what she has for the public and the part of the community outreach tonight.
Great, thank you, and you would be surprised, Stitt is complicated for a lot of people. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. As your legal counsel said, this is the first of five meetings with the first two being educational. So we won't get into maps until the third meeting. So the purpose of tonight really is to make sure, let's see if this is on, yeah, there we go, that everyone has the same education, information and to empower the public to participate. So what we're going to be going over today is our community outreach meeting. We're going to go over what districting is, the CVRA law here in California, public hearing schedule, traditional districting principles that we use throughout the process, it's what guides the drawing process. Talk about communities of interest and how that involves the public, how to get involved, we'll go over the population data and then what's next. So first, why we're here, districting, it is simply the initial phase of creating election boundaries. So it determines two things, who's eligible to run for that council seat and who can vote for their council members. So it's different from the at-large system that you're all very familiar with now, so under at-large, everyone votes for all the council members. Under districted election boundaries, you have to live within that election boundary to run for that seat and you have to live within that election boundary in order to vote for your candidate. Now that's what districting does and this is what districting doesn't necessarily do. So a lot of folks tend to be concerned about districting, splitting up their city and creating a fractured city council. That's more of a cultural issue and the city council can still govern a citywide, create, you know, implementate or implement things that are citywide, it doesn't have to be only their boundaries. And then of course, this only impacts how folks are elected, this will not impact city services and things like that. So the California Voting Rights Act, that is a state law, it was passed in early 2000s and it prohibits at-large election systems if there is evidence of racially polarized voting. And again, at-large is defined as anything other than a system in which an elected official lives in a district and is only elected by members of that district. So it's what we went over earlier. And then racially polarized voting is defined as differences in voting patterns which can be shown to be correlated to race, religion, national origin and other membership and another protected class. And importantly, under the CVRA, there are, I guess the teeth in the law really is when lawyers send a letter to a city requesting they transition into at-large election, or by-district elections from at-large. But those fees are capped so long as we follow the CVRA and the safe harbor provisions. So that's what we're going to be doing. And some of those safe harbor provisions include the five-meeting structure. Again, first two are educational, next three are devoted to maps and it must be completed within 90 days. So even though this map won't be implemented until the 2026 election, we still have to get it done in 90 days. Here is the initial public hearing schedule, so obviously tonight is the first one, December 17th will be the next, and then January 21st is the first map hearing. And the December 17th meeting will be a more in-depth meeting where you'll be able to ask all of your questions and Paul Mitchell, owner of the redistricting partners, he'll be presenting and getting into the weeds of the laws and the process, so it's more in-depth. So, public hearing schedule, as we mentioned, first two devoted to education. Importantly, during the third, fourth and fifth hearings, any maps that we consider and that we discuss in a meeting needs to be posted seven days in advance, so the public will have ample time to view those maps and let you all know how they feel about it. Getting into the districting criteria, these come from the Fair Maps Act, it's a state law and it's based on good practices that have been used throughout the country for redistrictings. The first, and this is a ranked list, so we have to follow it by which comes first. First priority is each election district needs to be relatively equal in size and we have a 10% total deviation that we're allowed to have and we're grateful for that. Congress only has a deviation of one person, which is really difficult to draw. With this 10% deviation, it allows us to keep together more communities and neighborhoods and things like that. The map needs to be contiguous, so election districts need to be whole pieces and we're not going from one part of the city to the southern part of the city and saying that's District One. You do have an island up north, that's just going to be joined to the closest area and I'll get more into that in a moment. To give you an idea of what I mean by it needs to be a whole piece, you'll see in this example that D district, that has a piece to the north that is not touching the rest of D. So that would need to be touching in order for that to be considered contiguous, so this would be non-contiguous. Here's an example of a different version of continuity or contiguity, so there's literal contiguity, which this is an example of what it's not, and then there's travel or functional contiguity. So this is the city of Davis, they, you'll see that highlight in the middle, that is a railroad and that prevents people from being able to cross over that boundary. So in order to ensure that this is contiguous, traveling, they used that as a boundary. That leads us into the next one. So, lines really should be easy to understand. When a person looks at it from the public, they should have an understanding why that was used as a boundary. And then keeping districts compact. So, this is really where we're looking for circles and squares and not ribbons that go through different neighborhoods. And I'll give you an example of that. It's a little difficult to see, but hopefully, it's easier to read. And for folks watching online, this is available on the website. So, you'll be able to download the presentation there. But the first on the left, that map was drawn before the Fair Maps Act was created. So, they didn't have these rules to follow. And what you see is five, four different districts that go through the entire city. So, it splits different neighborhoods, and went, and that actually encouraged the city to create a independent redistricting commission. So, when they came back and redistricted post-Fair Maps, they created a much more compact election district system. So, you can see, it's very different. And then getting into maintaining communities of interest. It is the third on the list, and it's really where the public comes to shine. We're looking to get information from the public about their communities, so we don't inadvertently split them up. It's important, so definition, real fast, communities of interest. It's a group of like-minded people who share common policy concerns and live in close proximity to each other. So, think of things like neighborhoods, school zone areas, things like that. Common characteristics include shared socioeconomic characteristics, shared histories, environment, housing. Homeowners and renters are often a really common community of interest, and we like to look at them as building blocks of districts. So, as I'm sure you all are very familiar with the idea that you're stronger when you're voting with your community, you're able to advocate better when you're able to advocate with your community. So, the goal is to keep together your community as much as possible. And of course, the Federal Voting Rights Act does recognize communities of interest in the sense that there are Latinos, Asian-Americans, African-Americans who can be considered a community of interest. But I do want to caveat that with while communities, these communities, I'm going to start that over, while communities of interest may include race, it cannot be the predominant factor when drawing unless there's a Section Two noncompliance issue under the Federal Voting Rights Act. So, I like to show this just to show how diverse communities of interest are. It goes beyond neighborhoods. It includes things like media markets, so where people get their information within their communities. Obviously, neighborhoods, languages spoken is a very common community of interest, and that, and when you think about communities of interest, think about how you're impacted by the city council's policies as well. So, somebody in a community where they predominantly speak something like Spanish, they're going to require different services or needs from the city council. So, that's what a community of interest is. What a community of interest is not is stated also under the Fair Maps Act. It does prohibit these three groups from being considered a community of interest, and that includes political party affiliation, incumbents, and political candidates. And that's there to prevent partisan gerrymandering or incumbent gerrymandering. And then the next part, that's not prohibited. It's just pretty much impossible to draw. So, a group of similarly minded people who do not share a geographic location. So, remember, we're trying to keep communities together so they're better able to advocate for themselves. And if they're, you know, spread throughout the entire city, it's pretty hard to keep that in one election district. So, when people are getting ready to give their testimony, and I'll tell everyone how to give their own testimony, there are three questions we like to prep people with. That first one is, does your community have a shared culture characteristic or bond? So, what makes you unique compared to your surrounding areas, and why should you be kept together? And then, is there, is your community geographic in nature? Can it be mapped? So, us as demographers, we're looking for specific street boundaries, landmarks, something that'll let us know where your community is. And then, how would you describe your community's relationship with the city council and the policies that are being implemented? So, there are numerous ways to get involved. Of course, there's already the website that's set up, and I'll show you guys the website in the end. There is a community of interest forum that is incredibly helpful for us to hear from the public regarding. So, you'll have those questions that we, I just asked, and then some. You can go on the website. It's there, or you can fill out a form and email it or mail it in as well. And then, we're looking for two different types of maps from the public. So, one map, it documents your community of interest, and then another map where you're able to draw one to five election districts. So, some people just want to draw an election district in their area and send that in, and we'll absolutely include that in the, in consideration. But you do have the option to draw four to five election boundaries as well. So, we have a paper map, and you can also download it on the website. This allows people to draw balanced districts. So, we have, this one up here, it shows four districts, but we also have one for five districts. And the city council is still determining how many city council seats they want. So, it's either four city council seats and an at-large mayor, or five city council seats, and keep it the way it is. All of this information and all of the future information on the City of Galt's districting is included on this website. And that'll include things like draft maps, public testimony, the calendar. All of that information is located here. And of course, if you want to provide testimony via email, you can always email districts@cityofgalt.org. So, there are three ways of giving testimony. You can come to these public meetings, give testimony that way. You can email your testimony, or you can send in maps. Now, let's get into the census data information. It's a little hard to read, but you have a city population of over twenty-five thousand people. When you break that down into a district, so if we have four districts, it's going to be six thousand four hundred and twenty-six people per district. And when we balance the, the population, we're looking at the 2020 census data. So, even though it's the end of 2024, we're still obligated to use the 2020 census data by law. If you guys were districting in 2029, we would still have to use the 2020 census data. So, that top portion, the 2020 census data, you're going to get that for every map you see, and you're also going to get the citizen voting age population data as well. These are two different data sets, but both very important for districting. The CVAP, Citizen Voting Age Population Data, that is used to ensure that we're following the Federal Voting Rights Act. That's the end of my presentation. So, I do encourage folks to go to the website, stay updated on the districting process. We're going to have updated dates for those latter two meetings and all of the other information needed to participate. And with that, I'm happy to take questions, and of course, you'll open it up to the public as well.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Now, I would like to open the public hearing. Tina, anybody, any public comments?
Tim Reed.
Good evening, everybody. Tim Reed. As you guys know, I was up here last time we talked about this, and I was against it then, and I'm still against it now. I provided the city clerk with a fourteen-page, it's actually a letter to the chief counsel, but I asked her if she could share it with everybody. And it goes over several things that have to do with this, right? I did a lot of late-night research and, and things. There's several different sections, and I'm not going to go over everything that was in the paper. I'll just hit the, the bullet points, and then I ask you guys to, to read it when you can. It covers the Galt demographics, which she did a great job of doing on there. The second one is the evidence of minority representation. Then it goes on to the absence of racially polarized voting. It cover, the next section is the geographic dispersion and minority populations. Then, it compares us to several, I think it's four other cities that went through the exact same thing, and shows the differences that we had with each one of those. And then, some financial considerations on what the different things could cost us. And then, it has a summary at the end. So, I could talk up here for my whole five minutes, but I wouldn't even cover half the things that were in there. I asked, please, read it. Take it, take that into consideration. Like I said, I'm still against it, and I don't think we should be doing it because we're not representing the people of Galt the best way that we could, when not every year, every single one of them have an opportunity to give their input to the city. And that's giving the people of our small city a disservice as opposed to cities like Santa Monica that have way more people than us, and populations that are concentrated in certain areas, not like Galt. So, I'm just going to leave it at that. Read it, please, and then have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim Reed, for your comment. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, there is no more public comment. Then I'm going to bring back to the council. Council, any comment on this agenda item?
I'll start off. First reference to Tim, I think every one of us completely agree with you, Tim. And I don't think that the person who, you know, is forcing us to do this really cares about what the data is or whatever. So, it would be, and those of you, the public, that this is the first time you're hearing about this. I mean, for, basically for us to fight this would cost, you know, millions of dollars to fight it if we were successful. And I don't know that that would be a wise use of funds and that the community would support that. Anyways, this, I'm sure that'll get talked about more as we move along with this process. But I have some questions for you, Ms., and I'm not going to even try to pronounce your last name, so I apologize. Can I just call you by your first name?
You can. It's Liz. Liz.
Liz. Thank you, Liz. So, in, I was reading through this packet here, and it talks about using, it says people, not citizens. Can you explain what that term means?
It means, so when the U.S. Census counts the public, they count more than just citizens. So, it includes everyone who lives in the area.
Okay. So, one thing that popped in my mind was that if we, if we do this by, by census data, if we say, okay, we roughly have to have five districts that are six thousand four hundred people, roughly, right? What I think you're going to find is that, you know, we only have like twelve thousand registered voters in Galt, okay? So, what's going to happen is you might have six thousand people that live in this district and six thousand people that live in District Two, but you might only have half of the actual registered voters that live in this district compared to another district which might have, be heavily concentrated with voters. So, how do you get around those nuances? Because it's going to be a real thing.
Yeah, and this is a question that comes up more and more because there are smaller and smaller cities that are getting the letter. And in terms of how we balance the district, we do have to use the 2020 census data by law. So, that's what we're going to be using to balance the districts. Now, there are other things that we can take a look at as well when we balance the district to consider. And we've made heat maps for places. We've made maps based on environmental quality. So, there are other factors that you can use when balancing, and you do have that ten percent total deviation. So, if you want to under-populate an area because you think that there are perhaps more voters there and overpopulate in a different area, you'll have that ability. Hopefully, that answers your question, but we really are stuck using the 2020 census.
Yeah. And then my next question is going to be, you know, the whole premise of the letter was that, you know, that we're not giving all minority representation to Galt even though we have a Sikh mayor and Mr. Lozano's, I mean, clearly, clearly we're, so what's ridiculous about this. But anyways, it, what, what concerns me is that you, I mean, I've lived in Galt all my life. I can know it very well. I can tell you what kind of people live in, what neighborhoods, every, by the street, everything, you know, I mean, probably walked every street in the city. You're going to have areas that are going to be heavily concentrated with Hispanic and other areas that are not at all. So, how are you going to make that fair? Because I don't even know how you would draw a map that you're going to say, we're going to make sure we have equal representation for, I just don't know how you would do it.
So, we do have that kind of population data. We can break down the map by, like, Latino CVAP. We can present a heat map and determine, you know, is it possible to create a district where Latinos can have an influence, a higher influence on the election. So, we'll be able to produce maps that show you that kind of demographic.
Okay. And then my last question is, we have a lot of development going on in Galt right now, some large areas. What my fear is, is we spend all this money and this time making these maps, and then in two years from now, those maps are skewed tremendously or those certain areas. How do we, how do we, how do we add those new areas in to, to a district and then, and it be, you know, without having to just redo the whole process? I, I mean, that's going to be a real thing, too, especially with Eastview, for example, which is, you know, are, are growing to the east, which is, you know, going to be, you know, eventually three thousand homes, I'm sorry, fifteen hundred homes in that area eventually. So, if you were just to add that into whatever district was touching that, then you're going to be offset. How do you deal with that stuff?
Yeah. So, the good news is, once you district, you'll district, you'll redistrict in 2031 with the updated population data from the 2030 census data. So, your map will go into effect in 2026. So, that means there are three elections under that. So, 2026, 2028, 3030. And then, there's a redistricting. So, that map will be revisited and updated to account for population change. Now, when it comes to predicting population, again, you have that ten percent wiggle room. So, if you think an area is going to be, you know, it's underpopulated by the census data because there will be growth, we can always under-populate that area with the anticipation of growth there. However, again, it's a ten percent deviation, and we have to stay under that.
So, who makes the decision with, let's say that phase one of Eastview comes online, and it's three hundred homes. So, let's just use like three people per household, right? So, we got nine hundred new people. So, and we haven't reached two, 2031 yet. Say, let's say it's 2028, okay? Really, in reality, it could be like right around 2027-ish, probably right after we get these maps done, that, that's going to come online, for real. So, who makes the decision of where those nine hundred voters, those nine hundred people go into what district? How do we do that?
So, I mean, ultimately, you guys will be deciding, and you'll be directing us what kind of maps you want to see. So, you can say something like, we want the, certain areas to be anticipated to have more population. Can you draw a map that underpopulates a certain area to anticipate that growth?
Yeah, and I think I'll just-
Yeah, and I think I'll just add that that's the best you can do until you get the new census data in 2030. Is you can work with that 10% deviation and if all of a sudden, you know, houses fall out of the sky and you got 3,000 more voters in one particular district, then that's the skin you live in until the next census data. But, you know, luckily, we do have a development pipeline. We can kind of anticipate some movement and we can try to, to work within that 10% deviation, but you do kind of have to live with that until 2030.
All right. That's, I might have more questions, but I'm going to let my fellow councilmembers go.
Thank you. I would like Mr. Splendario to please address Mr. Reed's concerns. And I would like you to specifically focus on the hazards for a city if they were to attempt to challenge this in the courts.
Yeah, so there's been no successful challenges to date from any city that has received a letter like we got. The largest, I would say force, striving force behind this is there is tremendous amount of attorney's fees available for the party that is sending these letters in. And those attorney's fees do not go both ways. So if they win, we, the city would not only be responsible for its own attorney's fees, it would be responsible for all the attorney's fees on the other side. This particular lawyer that sent in the letter to the city is pretty notorious for having pretty exorbitant attorney's fees claims. And so the, the, the data, and then, so that's, that's the, that's the financial risk. The reality is, a lot of cities have tried and none have successfully overcome and prevailed in court. Right now, the City of Santa Monica is still litigating something that's been many years old and they're in the tens of millions of exposure at this point. They obviously have the financial wherewithal because it's the City of Santa Monica. But even if they were to prevail, ultimately, it's been remanded to the trial court after going to the middle level appeal court, to the Supreme Court, and now it's backed down, remanded at the trial level. Even if they were successful, and by the way, the trial court may rule on something and that issue will get appealed all over again. So we may, it may continue to go through this process. If it goes through that process, even if they prevail, they're going to, like I said, they're going to be, have eaten tens of million dollars in attorney's fees. It's extremely expensive to litigate. And so, and what you have to be able to prove, you have to be able to show that there is indeed no racially polarized voting happening. And that is not necessarily proving that certain people would have had a vote. It's the, it's really, it's saying they would have had no ability to influence the outcome of an election. And so if the city is able to show that, if you can draw a district that has, for example, a majority-minority district, so let's say a majority district of Latinos, and yet we don't district that way, that's going to be prima facie evidence that there is, the city is not allowing that ability to allow that demographic to influence. And I think that, you know, based upon our population demographic data, that is something that is, is potentially challenging here. Now, that is not to say, these are all legal positions. That's not to say that I personally agree with the political theory behind it. That's not to say that that one has to subscribe to the, this is, this is ultimately legislation that's come from Sacramento that's been seized on by the advocates in that community. But just from a legal perspective, it's extremely tough hill sledding. And they started off, the first couple waves of litigation were against larger targets. And what's happened is they are moving down to smaller cities. I'm sure you're seeing it more and more. Because frankly, you know, how can I put this? They're, you know, the well's running dry a little bit, just to be blunt. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at. I think in the city's case, there is the potential to draw at least one majority-minority district. And that's going to be very, very, very difficult to, to persuade the courts based on the existing legal standards, just because they are so slighted in favor in the other direction. So, I mean, that's, that's probably as high a level as I can put it right now.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I had several questions, two of which I pretty much knew the answer to, and you covered the growth pattern moving forward. I would just suggest that as we go through this process, we really look at what true growth is going to be as opposed to what could happen. And traditionally, our city over the last 20 years grows at a much lower rate than what we're seeing now. And so a lot of it's going to depend on the housing market, certainly interest in builders to actually build place, residents. And, and so I would just kind of caution the timing of our belief of what the growth pattern is really going to be. And I think it was mentioned to look at how many building permits are being pulled and things like that. The other thing I had, the other question I had, and I think I know the answer to it, but let's just say, as you were talking about the hearing process and, and you had a slide that had hearing one through five. In hearing three, four, and five, there is the opportunity to publish maps and they have to be done seven days in advance. In my research and observation of several political jurisdictions that have gone through this process, there could be and probably is likely that someone from the public, certainly somebody who has a connection to a special interest group of whatever, whatever special interest groups out there, could come to the podium and say, you know, those all look great, but here's ours. And we want you to vote on this. My understanding is that can be considered through the same process in which you outlined, which traditionally hasn't gone through the proper process, right? It's at the podium at the eighth hour or 11th hour and wanting something to be considered. So that would have to be, that would have to wait till the next hearing.
That's right.
And also, it would have to be published seven days prior.
That's right. Yes.
Okay. Because one jurisdiction actually had that happen and for whatever reason, the governing body took a real liking to it. Whether it be political reasons or, or whatever, and, and that did have to get pushed off to the next hearing.
Yeah, and the public can come up here and talk about a map that they drew. You guys just can't discuss the map until it's published for, you know, seven days. So they can make their testimony, it's on the record, and then you can revisit that map at the next meeting after it's been published for seven days.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the, the presentation. It was, it was informative and, and I don't have any other questions.
Good. And just as a reminder, the next meeting goes more in depth. So a lot of, you'll be able to ask a lot more detailed questions too. It's going to run about 45 minutes for the presentation, just to give you a sense of timing.
Liz, I have one more big question. It's not a detailed question. I appreciate you saying that. We'll have, I know we'll have a lot more opportunity to ask questions. But you mentioned in your presentation that, you know, we'll be making a decision where we want to do five districts or four districts plus that large mayor. Our legal counsel, Mr. Splendario, has mentioned that it's his feeling that if we were to look at a four district plus that large election, that that wouldn't appease the powers that be and we would be wasting our time and we would...
Can I, can I?
Yeah.
No, I, respectfully, I, I think what I've tried to say, and I probably didn't say it clearly, was it's possible. We just have to look at the, look at the data. It's really just going to be dependent on the data. And if it's something that the data supports, then it's, you know, then it's something that we could pursue. It's just, we can't, especially at this stage when we haven't drawn the maps, we just can't commit to that. But I'll let, I mean, I think, Liz, you can speak to that a little bit as well in terms of it being a viable possibility.
Sure. I will say, it's a lot more common for councils where it's, you know, a rotating mayor to have all five seats be districted. So that usually gives folks a lot more coverage from any potential lawsuits. Now, that being said, we do have to look at the data. We'll give you guys more information to make that decision on whether you want four or five. And I would listen to your legal counsel on which he thinks is the most defendable.
Is it your experience with your clients that you've worked with? That, have you had any that have done the four and one and been successful and whatever, or not really?
I believe I would have, and I'll double check. If I'm wrong about this, I'll let staff know. I believe all of our clients have gone to five districts if they were already five.
Okay.
I'll just say that we're, we're, we're going to look at both clearly and we'll, we'll report back. There's no, there's been no decisions internally or any of that kind of stuff. We're, we're truly going to look at this with an open mind and, and try to bring as many good options to the council as possible to make policy decisions.
Thank you. Councilmember, any more comment? If not, thank you for your presentation. And for the public, the reason we was moving that forward is to read, your comment is, is same thing my thinking was, but then we heard from the city attorneys. And I know sometimes we end up is even we don't want that, but something we, we have to work with the best interest of the public money. So we need to be every, I think we have a three, four meeting for this process. We certainly will, whatever the public wants, we can move, I think every council member wants whatever public will, will let us to direct us. And we will make a decision, final decision from that. Let's again, thank you and thank you, my colleagues. Any, anybody, any comment from staff? If it's not, then I'm going to move on the next agenda item. Next agenda item is Mayor A Sacramento County Wide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program. I think that's Ms. Mendez.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Amy Mendez, interim community development director. I still get that wrong all of the time. I'm here this evening for hopefully a brief item, more of a housekeeping item related to a, a fee adoption that we're going to be looking for council approval on. In 2004, Sacramento County voters supported the renewal of Measure A, which took effect in 2009. As many of you know, Measure A is a one-half cent transportation sales tax collected in Sacramento County, which is administered by the Sacramento Transportation Authority, or STA. This renewal of Measure A included an expenditure plan and extended the existing Measure A sales tax for another 30 years. In addition to the expenditure plan, the renewal also required the implementation of the Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Development Impact Fee Program. It's a long one. This fee program partially funded the transportation improvements and projects identified in the Measure A expenditure plan. The program was created to generate a uniform transportation mitigation fee on new development projects in Sacramento County. So just to recap, there are two funding sources as part of the Measure A renewal. One is a half-cent transportation sales tax charged to consumers in Sacramento County. The other is a mitigation development impact fee charged on new development projects. The City of Galt currently collects the Measure A mitigation fee as part of the building permit process and remits the revenues directly to STA. These revenues are then reallocated to specific countywide transportation projects included in the expenditure plan. Each jurisdiction in the county is required to implement the Measure A mitigation fee program as a condition of receiving funding for local transportation projects. In 2022, STA conducted an updated NEXA study to ensure that current and forecasted land uses are consistent with the categories outlined in the Measure A mitigation fee program. Recently, STA adopted the 2024 Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Development Impact Fee Program NEXA Study with additional land use categories and other relevant modifications. They also adopted updated Measure A development impact mitigation fee rates, which take effect on January 1st, 2025. The updated fee amounts are included in tonight's agenda packet, as is the 2024 NEXA study adopted by STA. The city is being asked to approve the NEXA study and the updated fee rates, which if adopted tonight, will take effect on January 1st, 2025. Also, as part of the Measure A mitigation fee program, STA developed an agreement on operating protocols to apply to all jurisdictions in the county regarding the obligation to impose, collect, account, and remit the Measure A mitigation fee to STA. This agreement was recently updated to incorporate the updated fee rates and includes fee reductions for infill and transit-oriented development and additional exemptions for accessory dwelling units. This updated agreement is also included in your agenda packet tonight for reference. So with that, tonight, we are requesting that city council approve the 2024 Measure A Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program NEXA Study and approve the amended agreement on operating protocols for the Sacramento Countywide Transportation Mitigation Fee Program. And I am happy to answer any questions you might have related to this.
Thank you. Councilmember, anybody have any question on this agenda item? Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item?
No comment.
Thank you. Myself, I also know any comment, but just one.
Mayor, just to clarify, did you actually open the public hearing? Did I miss that? This is a public hearing item as well.
All right.
I know you said public comment, but...
But a public comment.
Yeah, thank you.
So now I would like to open the public hearing. Anybody have any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Ms. Mendez, and there was on the report, they said the AB 602, you might know what's that? If it's not, then...
So it's, it's actually just related to square footages. So they were trying to make the fee more proportionate to square footages as opposed to just applying it as a flat rate to residential development. And so that's what that is in compliance with.
All right. Thank you. If there is nobody have no comment, then I will, if I have a motion to approve this agenda item J2.
So moved.
Is moved by Councilmember Jay Vandenberg.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Rich Lozano. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 420. Thank you. All right. Next agenda item is J3. Anexation of Territory to Community Facility District Number 2021. Public Service Anexation Number 8 Elliot Ranch. Before we go to this agenda item, I would like to announce myself. On this, on this agenda item, there's a property, my family have a piece of property within 500 feet of this project. So with the abundance of precaution, I would like to recuse myself from this agenda item. If you guys give me a couple of minutes, I have to leave from the room. Then I would like to ask Vice Mayor, he take over the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, as the mayor's getting ready to recuse himself...
As the mayor is getting ready to recuse himself, I just want to ask if the notice of public hearing was mailed and published in accordance with the law?
Yes, the notice was mailed and published in accordance with the law.
Okay. And can we have a report from city staff with regard to the proposed annexation number eight Elliot Ranch to Community Facilities District number 2020 dash one?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is step two in the process to annex Elliot Ranch villages two and three into CFD 2020 dash one by conducting the public hearing and then conducting an election for annexation of the Elliot Ranch subdivision into 2020 dash one. The recommendation, the staff report identifies five distinct actions for the second step in the process. This project will be the eighth annexation into CFD 2020 dash one. Just for a little background, Village two consists of 112 parcels and Village three consists of 193 parcels for a total of 305 parcels. Should these parcels annex into the CFD 2020 dash one, then upon build out of these two villages, the city will annually receive approximately $200,000 a year in revenue for municipal police services and $300,000 per year in revenue for maintenance services, specifically streets and roadways, street, uh, streetlights, parks, parkways, and open space. In addition, Consumer CSD will receive approximately $100,000 a year in revenue for fire and ambulance and paramedic services. These, uh, these revenue sources or the assessment does adjust annually for inflation. Uh, and these funds then are all, the city funds are all deposited into Fund 52 for use by the various departments for, uh, for, for their, their work covered by these funding sources. Annexation CFD, annexation into CFD 2020 dash one is a condition of approval for the Elliot, for the Elliot Ranch project. The parcel for Village one, which is located at the southeast corner of Crystal and Simmerhorn, is not part of this annexation and it will annex at a future date to be determined. In conclusion, should council complete these five distinct actions tonight, then staff will return on December 3rd to request that council adopt the ordinance to annex this project into CFD 2020 dash one. So that concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions.
Excellent. Any council members have any questions?
Just one real quick. What was the total number for, just was it was 200, 200,000, 300,000, and 100,000?
Yes, 200,000 for municipal police services, 300,000 for maintenance services, and then $100,000 for.
So roughly like $2,000 per parcel if it's like 300 parcels, right? So I'm just curious.
Yes, yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing in person and then on phone if, to protest comments and questions from interested parties, including persons owning property within the annexation number eight Elliot Ranch of the Community Facilities District 2020 dash one. Public hearing is open. Any comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Any other questions from city councils? City clerk, is there any written protests that have been received?
No written protests have been received.
City clerk, as to whether there are any persons registered to vote within the annexation number six category, I'm sorry, annexation number eight Elliot Ranch of the Community Facilities District 2021 dash 20, 20 dash one, and if so, the number?
Uh, no, the county of Sacramento registrar of voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number eight Elliot Ranch of Community Facilities District number 2020 dash one.
Okay. And if the owner of all of the taxable property in the annexation number eight Elliot Ranch of Community Facilities District number 2020 dash one has consented to holding the special election on the November 19th, 2024?
Yes.
Are there any public, any further public comment in person or on phone?
No further comments.
Okay. Do you concur that the special election may be held on this date, November 19th, 2024?
Yes.
There are no further public testimony will be accepted. We're going to close the public hearing, call for a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, California, calling a special election and submitting to the qualified electors of the territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Galt, Community Facilities District number 2020 dash one, Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, the question of levying special taxes within that territorial annexation number eight Elliot Ranch. So moved.
Second.
And the city clerk, can you conduct the special election by stating the official ballot has been opened and that all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot?
Yes.
Okay. And so now we're going to vote on the motion. City clerk, can we have a roll call?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
And Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Okay. I'm also going to need a motion to approve the following, the following next resolution. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Galt, acting in its capacity as a legislative body of the City of Galt, Community Facilities District number 2020 dash one, Public Services, County of Sacramento, State of California, declaring the results of the special election in such Community Facilities District on the proposition of the annual levy of special taxes within the territory proposed to be annexed to said Community Facilities District to pay the cost of certain services to, to be provided by the Community Facilities District. Determining that the territory proposed be, to be annexed is added to the part of said Community Facilities District with full legal effect and ordering the recording of the map of the boundaries of that said Community Facilities District, including the territory annex thereto, annexation number eight Elliot Ranch. And. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
All right. All those, oh, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
And Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
The ordinance of the City Council of the City of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in the Community Facilities District, including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number eight LA Ranch into the City of the Community, Galt Community Facilities District number 2020 dash one, Public Services, to complete the annexation of the property of the Community Facilities District. That's it? So moved. And I'll second that. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
And Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye. I'm, I'm glad to see you got stuck reading one of those things.
Yeah, it's a little tough sometimes, I guess.
Yes, it is.
All right. Regular calendar, we have nothing communication. Do we have any communication?
None this evening.
City clerk's report?
Nothing.
Comments by staff? Good evening, Vice Mayor. We do have a couple of comments from staff. Public Works Director John Griffin?
Um, yes, to be the bearer of bad news, we know that rain is coming and those, the upcoming rains are going to have a significant impact on two city projects. We were hoping to be able to be paving on C Street next week. That will be delayed as well as paving for the public parking right corporate yard on Elm. So both those projects are being delayed by the upcoming rain events. Yeah. Also, secondly, I want to also thank Councilmember Lozano or Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Lozano. He, a lot of effort behind the scenes on Secog and getting all of our projects on that list, including the Walnut Avenue interchange. So first of all, thank you for acknowledging city staff, but I also want to make sure that everybody understands that Vice Mayor Lozano had a significant role and effort in getting that approved as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you, John. I think it was a very small role compared to what you, you all do. And also interim community development director, Amy Mendez.
Good evening. Real quick, I just wanted to touch on something that I mentioned a planning commission last week on Thursday and be sure that I shared the same information with council in regards to the social media chatter that's been out there as it relates to the Maverick application the city is processing. We did put something out on social media last week to try to clear up some of the misinformation that's out there. And so we'll probably do another post this week to again reiterate the facts as it relates to this project and timing as to when this will be before planning commission because it does require a CUP, which is a conditional use permit. The Maverick proposal that we have is for 4.43 acres located right off of the C Street Central Galt Interchange. And so this map that the clerk has, has posted here shows where the proposed Maverick is in conjunction to the overall Simmerhorn commercial site. The Crystal Way will be extended through Simmerhorn and that'll be part of the project as it relates to Maverick as well as the commercial development and Elliot Ranch for their residential development. So I wanted to make sure that I announced to you, as it relates to this project, you know, I think most of the chatter is regarding a truck stop or amenities for truck drivers. And the proposal as we have it is for 4.43 acres. I think that's what that says. The total remaining Simmerhorn commercial site is 38 acres. And so we are, we do have in our possession a site plan for the entire site, which includes the Maverick proposal. This is not a 40 acre truck stop. I've seen that out on social media. This is a 40 acre commercial site with a four acre proposal for a convenience store and gas station. There are six, five or six fueling islands for commercial vehicles, which includes semi-trucks. I want to make sure I get you the information correct. The convenience component is almost 6,000 square feet for a convenience store with a fresh food counter. There are 26 gasoline pumps for passenger vehicles, five high-speed commercial islands. And so I did verify today with Maverick that a typical truck, semi-truck that comes through, it will take 20 minutes for them to fuel. And so that's enough time for them to run inside, use the restroom, purchase whatever they need to purchase at the convenience store and leave. There is no truck parking on this site whatsoever. There are 35 vehicle parking places and then there's an R, an onsite RV sewage dump and two cat scales. And so again, just to reiterate that there's no parking stalls for truck vehicles and there's no truck, traditional truck stop amenities. There's no showers, there's no lounge areas, there's no laundry facilities, and there's no overnight parking. This is considered a gas station with the convenience market per the Galt Municipal Code. It's within the zoning for the Highway Commercial District. We are processing an environmental document on this and a traffic study. We hope to have this in front of Planning Commission for consideration in February of 2025. There is a process that we have to go through as it relates to SEQA and as it relates to the traffic study, and so that's really the delay. I think there's been some speculation that this is being hidden by city, city staff, and we just don't like to daylight projects and site plans until they're finalized and ready for Planning Commission. And so that's where this project is currently. We're processing the application. We are working very much so with the developer on the commercial site for the overall development. We have a lot of interest on this site right now. And so I don't want that to be forgotten that, yes, this is the first project application that we have on the commercial site, but we have a significant amount of interest on the commercial site as it relates to the remainder of the property. And so this will be project number one through the gate that we're considering, but we have quite a few applications that will follow. So happy to answer any questions or clarify anything if anybody has any additional follow-up. But I just wanted to make sure I put that out there for everybody.
Do you have one question?
Any questions?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. So the remaining, just the commercial piece of it is 38 acres. That doesn't include the residential area that's being developed right now?
No, there's, the total site is 45 acres, so five of it is residential and then 38 would be the remainder of the commercial property.
Got you. Okay, okay. What, what is the difference between something like a Maverick, for example, or something like that, and some of the other interests that's there? Like as far as, I know there's been talk about, um, let's say like, I'm just going to make something up. Let's say a wiener schnitzel wants to come into that area, okay? Not really, I don't know if they're really looking at the area. I'm just, I'm trying to pick a neutral name. What would be the difference in someone like a Maverick compared to like a wiener schnitzel as far as what's being done on site or what, who covers what and stuff like that?
You know, Maverick being first out the gate, they are, and the reason they've proceeded sort of ahead of the overall project is timing more so than anything. And so they're willing and ready to put the infrastructure in necessary to get water and sewer to their site so that they can connect and share those costs. We've been working with Elliot on the overall construction of Crystal, which includes the extension of water and sewer to the overall commercial site. So it is important from that aspect. They do, are required to do a traffic study. We're, we're doing that for the entire site. This isn't just specific to Maverick. And this project does require a CUP, which is a conditional use permit because of the convenience market component. Typical QSRs, so like a wiener schnitzel or any other fast food drive-through would require a conditional use permit as well because they, the drive-through component is a CUP requirement through Planning Commission. And so each of those will kind of go through the same process. The demand that we're seeing right now is heavily from QSRs. We're talking things like fast food restaurants, but fast casual, so the Chipotles and the Panda Expresses and, you know, your typical fast food, which you think of as In-N-Out or Chick-fil-A or Burger King or McDonald's. Those are the types of uses for the traditional fast food. Very high demand on that primarily because of the ease of access and the visibility off of 99. We have a site plan that shows a big box on the site, and so that's roughly 125, 130,000 square feet, which could accommodate a Target or Kohl's or something along those lines. I think at the end of this, because we've seen so much interest, the northern end of the site is where most of the demand is for the QSRs and for the restaurants. Phase one of the development, which is proposed on the north end of the site off of Simmerhorn, includes several QSRs. It also has an 8,000 square foot sit-down restaurant. You know, they're targeting national chain sit-down restaurant for that phase one development. The rest will fill in with some junior box anchors. We're hoping for soft goods users, TJ Maxx, Ross, Famous Footwear, Old Navy, retailers of those types.
All right. Thank you, Amy.
Okay. Now with that, there's no more staff comment. I would just like to say, wish you all, wish everybody happy Thanksgiving that's coming up next week. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to comments by city council members on future agenda items and other comments. We're going to start with Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, I actually had a request for a future agenda item, but is the mayor coming back?
No, he is not.
Well, I, I, I had a request to see if we would, where's my notes? If we could schedule a special meeting as soon as possible after the election is certified to discuss for the, for the, for sole purpose of discussing how to fill Mr. Lozano's seat.
I know.
We'll get to that. I got your letter, but yeah, I know that's coming, so, sorry. You called on me first, you got to go first.
I know, I know.
Yeah, so that I just, because I know there's some time crunch with, with getting that filled and some appointments to planning because of all the project and stuff, so I was, I think, you know, to wait for typical council meetings might be a little bit. So I was just seeing if the council would be interested in.
Well, I would ask that, isn't there already a written procedure for such matters and we should follow that?
Well, I don't think there's not a written procedure in terms of.
A legal procedure?
The council has discretion in how they want to follow, they want to fill an appointment. They could call a special election, they could do it by appointment, but how they do that appointment and what criteria they use, that's up to the council's discretion. So there is a discussion to be had at the. that's up to the council's discretion, so there is a discussion to be had at the, at a, at the policy level in terms of how you want to go about filling any potential vacancies on the council.
Excellent, then I support Mr. Farmer. Three is enough.
Anything else, Mr. Farmer?
Oh, just that, I mean, there was a lot of things we've attended of since the last meeting, it feels like it was forever ago. Turkey Treat on Fourth Street was successful, all that. Can't think of any particular, just thank you for answering my questions, Mr. Griffin and your staff. And thank you, Amy, for your question, for your answers and just everybody have a good Thanksgiving, be safe out there and we'll see you back, I guess, on the 3rd of December, I think it is. And can get, a little premature, but congratulations, Mr. Reed. And the rest is to be determined, I suppose, so, good night, everybody.
Okay, Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin, I just have one curiosity about the paving, will the soil need to be dry before it has, before the company has an opportunity to pave? Or just lack of rain for a day or two?
My understanding is on C Street that George Reed is actually putting down some Visqueen and in preparation for the rain to allow us to do that, allow the project site to pave sooner. They've done, they've done a lot of work and they were actually, I said, hoping to start early next week. So that's, that's their plan is to put Visqueen down and that way, the best they can will protect the subgrade and allow minimal work.
And the, and the, Reed, whoever's doing the work, I forget the name right now, but it doesn't matter. I frequent that shopping center weekly, if not two or three times a week, so it's often a curiosity for, curiosity for me. I think it's coming along quite well and I think it looks fabulous, I'm looking forward to the finished product.
Thank you.
Having said that, this is probably my last time as public comment, so I'd like to, there's a lot of faces here as I'm sitting here, I'm realizing there's so many different faces than when I started four years ago. And I'd like to thank all of staff, even though sometimes we are what appears to be confrontational to staff, it's really not intended that way. I certainly did not and I don't take any offense to anybody that challenges me, not that I get the choice to either, any, either way. I'd like to thank my fellow council members for serving. Certainly if you do this for a while, you understand what they do and what have to put up with. Sometimes there's many good opportunities, I had the, as mayor, I had opportunities to do speeches that I'm quite proud of and some that I wish I could redo, to be quite honest, but that's okay too. I never would have imagined my life taking the turns that they have in the past couple of years and they were all for the better, so I I look forward to the way the world is going to go for me and with that I say thank you. That's all, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Vandenberg for your service and much appreciated. I've got a couple of things, first of all, want to mention that the Galt Sunrise Rotary Rotary and the city are sponsoring the community dinner on December 21st from 1:00 to 4:00, it is open to the public, so if you have an interest in having a free turkey dinner with everything that comes with it, certainly spread the word and come out and we'll be looking for city staff to attend to help serve as well as my colleagues up here. Everybody else have a great Thanksgiving if I don't see you between now and then and great holiday time with your families and hopefully staff was able to take their packs off a little bit and relax. Lastly, I just want to mention that it, definitely a heavy heart and a great anticipation that I'm announcing that I've submitted my resignation letter to the mayor from the Galt City Council midterm. I know a lot of people knew it was coming, but anticipate my final council meeting being on December 3rd. Serving on the council for the last past six years has been exciting and rewarding experience. However, I've decided to serve the citizens of Galt in a different capacity and was elected to the Casuma, Casuma Community Service District Board of Directors, Division One on the November 5th general election. So my resignation will be effective December 4th at 12:00 AM. Or at such time immediately thereafter, I am sworn in as a director of the Casuma Community Service District. The reason that's in there is because we know that elections and election results and certification of elections can get a little wonky sometimes. I'm proud of the work of the, my colleagues and certainly city staff, partner agencies, local businesses, nonprofits, and the citizens have done in my time on the council. I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the greater Galt community in a different capacity. I want to thank just a few people and as Mr. Vandenberg said, there are many faces that make this city run, including city staff as well as the community. But I first like to thank citizens of the city for putting their faith in my ability to lead since 2018. We've accomplished many things here at the city and have also navigated different difficult situations, including the federal and state policies related to the COVID-19 pandemic. We've also managed some difficult budget times and the city stood strong by putting citizens first. And many of my council members at the time reduced spending when it was necessary. We've accomplished moving initiative forward that have and will continue to help the city prosper. Some examples that come to mind are increasing the tools for our police officers, such as body worn cameras and in car cameras, drones and license plate readers, specifically the Flock system. We've also shored up our financial situation, we now have an award winning finance department that is more transparent and nimbler. Lastly, the monthly Galt market, and I think that was the brainchild of Councilmember Vandenberg, has been a huge success in bringing our community together and with themed events on the Fourth Street Promenade and we're hoping that the funding comes in to complete that promenade, but it is on the list and so that's a good thing. I would like to mention the work we've been able to accomplish with our business and nonprofit community. We've entered into a real and meaningful partnership with the Galt Area Chamber of Commerce. This partnership will infuse resources to our local businesses, many of which are family owned, to drive economic development and prosperity to our local community. We have partnered with our nonprofit community in cosponsorships to an extent that we did not see prior to 2018. The wide array of work that has been done to bring events to our community and visitors alike is tremendous. I'll mention a couple that are just recent successes, the trunk or treat on Fourth Street Promenade organized by LaHeim and the Harvest Festival last weekend hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. Our nonprofits and business communities are the backbone of our success as a city and I wish them all well. There are too many accomplishments to mention all, but I believe our public outreach efforts have been second to none. An example is what we just discussed can be the, can be seen through the C Street Improvement Project where the city was able to secure grant and regional transportation funding from Secog to hold public meetings and implement a robust line of communication with our business community and citizens to reimagine our gateway to our city for the community and visitors. I know this project will be a charm when it's completed. I'm almost done, the city does not operate without our city staff and I'd like to thank them for their work and all they do to make these projects and partnerships happen, so thank you. Thank you to my council colleagues over the years for the work you've allowed me to be a part of and making great, Galt a great city to live, work, and play. I also want to thank my wife Pam and my daughters Alicia and Courtney and certainly extended family and supporters for allowing me to serve the community for the past 14 years, including the last six years on the city council. I'm not really going to go anywhere, I'll still be around, I think the December 17th meeting, I'll also be here for that. But I wish the City of Galt and the council much success in the coming years, so thank you. Is there anything else?